Vin Colonna, Hebron.
Lori.
Lori Blake, Andover.
Rob.
Rob Schadl from Hebron.
Jess.
Jessica Dapsis, Hebron.
Is Jean on tonight? No, not hearing Jean. I'm Stephanie Bancroft from Andover. Did any, are there any other?
Yes.
Oh, hi Judy.
Judy Benson, Clark, Marlboro.
Okay, are there any other board members that I haven't called? Okay, we'll move on to administration. Scott?
Scott Leslie, Acting Superintendent.
Penny?
Penny Briscoe, Interim Principal, High School.
Mike?
Michael Cerusi, Principal, Ram Middle School.
Hi, so Carrie Anne?
Carrie Anne Bowles, Assistant Principal at Ram Middle School.
Are there any other administration on?
Christine Hartwig.
I'm sorry Christine, go ahead.
Go ahead Christine.
Christine Hartwig, Director of People's Services.
Chris Mader, Assistant Principal, Ram High School.
Okay. All right, our student representatives?
Dana Chmuleski, Marlboro.
Lily Shevchenko, Andover.
Okay, Eva?
Eva Gallup, Business Manager.
And our Board Clerk, Karen?
Karen DiCorleto, Board Clerk.
And have I missed anyone?
Hi, this is Jean Wilson, Marlboro.
Hi Jean. Okay, very good. All right, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time we'll open it up for public comments. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Yes, I would.
So Dieter?
Yes, Stephanie, can you hear me?
I can, go ahead.
Just a very correction to your minutes. For some minutes on January 25th. If you make a correction, my name, to spell my name correct, that would be nice. Thank you. This is all comments which I have.
Okay, thank you Dieter. Are there any other public comments? Okay, I'm not hearing any or seeing any anything written, so we will move on to additions and deletions to the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to move the 10.5 non-meeting collective bargaining discussion regarding the athletic director and administrative contract to the end of the meeting.
I'll second. Vin?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but we would do this after adjournment?
Um, that's correct. Yes, I think that would be for, yes, after adjournment.
Okay. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay, we're going to move on then to number five, Student Representative Reports.
Hi everyone, I'm Lily Shevchenko, Junior at Ram. Um, I just wanted to touch on the fact that, and thank the administration for changing the Wednesday schedule. For those of you who don't know, we had an eight-period day on Wednesdays. And that was pretty chaotic for both the teachers and the students despite the fact that we, you know, would do eight periods every day last year. But this year, since we're all at home, it makes everything harder. And I just want to thank the administration for seeing to that and changing it to the shorter day. I also wanted to talk about students and their mental health. As we're approaching the, well, we're in the second semester now. A lot of people, I think I speak for most of the student body when I say this. We're not doing well mentally. It's hard, we're not seeing our friends, and we're not able to do sports. Life is so different now, and it, it's not like a snap of a finger to adjust. And I'm glad that administration is doing everything they can to make it easier, but still, I think that there is things that could be done. I think I know that it's important for students at this time to be getting the most out of every day. Like in terms of learning and, you know, like the curriculum. But I also think that teachers and administration have to keep in mind that we are still in a pandemic. People are still losing their lives and people are still suck at home. And last year in the spring, as COVID was just sort of making its entrance, school was a lot more toned down. There were not a lot for us to do, not a lot of homework, not a lot of responsibilities. And that's because people were concerned about mental health and, you know, everyone's how everyone was doing. And I think we sort of lost sight of that. Because then everyone was sort of happy, like finding new hobbies and, and having more time for themselves. And now it's worse than ever. People don't have time for themselves. And I think that, you know, it's easy for teachers to say, well, we want to get through the curriculum, but I think it's more important to sort of prioritize the need of the students' mental health rather than want to cram in so many, you know, lessons or homework to get through the year. So, just wanted to bring that to light. And here's Dana.
Hi, I'm Dana, I'm a senior. I have some stuff written down, so if you see me looking down, that's why. I want to start by echoing everything Lily said. I do think that students' mental health is really struggling right now. I'm not, I don't have a reason as to why it's gotten worse recently. But it seems like in the recent month or two, things have definitely progressed in a negative way. I've also liked to address the lack of communication between administration and students. Most students really don't know what's happening right now. I was in class the other day and my teacher asked a bunch of seniors if they knew who the principal was. And nobody besides me knew the answer to that. And I work with the principal very frequently, so I would know that, but nobody else did. I think that's a problem. I also think we need to address the fact that student voices aren't necessarily being heard as much as they should be. I'm incredibly grateful for the position that I have, however, when I am asked specifically to give my opinion on things, specifically me, most of the time, I think we do neglect a lot of student voices. And I think that that is something we need to be working on a little bit more and getting more student input and thoughts, because there's so many different types of students that we have. And I think we need to focus on finding what's best for every individual type of student, because there's so many that we're neglecting to focus on. And the last thing I wanted to touch on, something I've heard about. This past Wednesday, we had AP review on our day off. I know what I've heard is that some students think that teachers were kind of using that as a way to get out of their responsibilities for the day. And some students really think that we shouldn't have had that on our day off, considering how our mental health is. I'm not going to state an opinion on that. I'm just bringing that to the table and saying that there are students who aren't pleased with the way things are going, especially because we do have much earlier dismissals than we usually do. And we get out at like 1:00, so they, they can reasonably happen after school. So again, I'm not necessarily stating my opinion on a lot of things right now. I'm just bringing to light what a lot of students are feeling. And I think the biggest thing is that we need more communication. We need more of a focus on students' mental health as it is really deteriorating right now. And we need to figure out how to work things into the schedule to better accommodate students. And also like Lily said, I would like to say that I do personally really appreciate the change to the way the schedule was working. That was kind of chaotic, the way it was initially planned. And I think a lot of students do really appreciate that it was looked at again and altered. So that's what I have for you guys for tonight. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay, next is number six. Chair report. We heard back from the Commissioner about our request to have Scott on for a second year for Acting Superintendent. And good news, we were granted our request, so we will have Scott a second year next year. And we are very happy and thrilled to have Scott back for, for year number two. So I want to make that official announcement. Want to thank the teachers. We know it's a really difficult year and we know that you are putting everything you have into it. And, and just a thought of gratitude to you going forward. It, winter time is, is difficult for everyone. And this is starting to be crunch time. And, and I know you're all concerned about getting through curriculum and, but we want to just extend our, our gratitude to, to all you do. And that's it. Going on to the Superintendent Report.
Thank you Stephanie. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to, first of all, like to thank Lily and Dana for expressing what you've just expressed on behalf of our students. It is, you know, I think we, we would all agree that it's, it's a tough time. It's a tough time. We know for students, we know that students are struggling. It's a tough time for teachers. I think our teachers are struggling with that mental health, some of those, those challenges as well. I think it's probably true of administrators, and I know it's true of parents too. I think it's, 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 it's a tough time. And so it's, you know, I appreciate you expressing that and so that we can begin working together to address those issues. I would like to positive note, Dana Chmuleski did a, you know, does a wonderful job as the board rep for the students. And I think I know I've mentioned this in the past. She also serves on the Commissioner's Advisory Committee, so she has an opportunity to advise on the state level. Ram is part of a group called the University Area Superintendents Group. This is a group of superintendents. We meet weekly. And finding it very helpful at this time to obviously compare and share notes as to what we're each doing and getting advice. We have a yearly legislative breakfast where we invite local legislators to join us, so we can talk about educational issues before they're, you know, they go into their to their work. And this year, for the first time, we thought it would be valuable to have a student voice represented at the legislative breakfast, so that not only the superintendents in attendance, but the legislators could get the student voice. And I had suggested Dana, and Dana joined us and did an absolutely beautiful job of representing student voice. And, and I have to give a shout out to Dana, because even then she stressed that, you know, she was speaking for herself and she wasn't speaking for all students and really expressed the need for all of us to reach out to a wide variety of students so that we hear student voices as opposed to one single student. So Dana, congratulations and thank you for doing a wonderful job at the legislative breakfast. And, and, you know, Dana had to leave early because she had a class to go to, so she wasn't able to be, be at a good portion of the meeting. But what was wonderful is that a number of her comments kept on coming back. Either mentioned by the legislators in attendance or some of the superintendents. So they were certainly well received. I think the, right now, the, the thought in everybody's mind is, is where are we going? Where is school going? Dana and Lily mentioned the modifications we've made to the schedule. We made a notice a couple of weeks ago that we were making this modification. Our goal at the time was to modify the Wednesday so that we could bring students into the building more often. We felt that we were moving towards that timeframe when it was safe to bring students in the building more often. And we had the wherewithal. And we were certainly hearing from students and parents and teachers that they wanted to see students in more frequently. You know, we're working with our, our, our block schedule. One of the things we discovered during one of the opportunities we took to allow some of our students to attend school during Wednesday to try to make sure that the number of days that students were in school were equal for the Monday, Tuesday students and Thursday, Friday students. We found that bringing students into the building for the eight-period day made it just about impossible to keep physical distancing in place. So hence, we, we modified the schedule, so now we, we just alternate the one, two days. The result of our first attempt at that meant that the days in which students attended school varied from one week to a next. And we certainly heard a lot of feedback from students, from parents, from teachers, that, that may have created some more hardships than the problems it solved. So we've been working on that this week. We talked to our, the faculties at both middle and high schools today, and we have modified the schedule, which we've shared with students and parents, so that students will be able to continue to attend school on a Monday, Tuesday, or a Thursday, Friday. And what we're doing is we're adding Wednesday to the mix. So that they'll be able to attend school three days a week for that, or at least two times during the month. I think the other question that I'm sure is on, on everybody's lips is, you know, what, what is the status of potential for reopening school? Certainly, as we're looking around and the positivity rate is declining. We're seeing more schools announce that they're either considering going back in full return, or they are making, you know, already have plans to return full in. We've started our school reopening advisory committee will be meeting again. That's a committee that has parents, students, staff. And we will start that process so that we can hopefully set a date and be looking at a return. Bring our students back. Obviously, the things we're going to be looking at is how can we do so to keep our students safe, keep our staff safe? And to make sure that we maintain the integrity of our academic program and also our social, emotional well-being program, so that we can make all of that happen. It's going to take some planning, so that's what we'll be doing over the next couple of weeks. In the notice we sent out to families, we assured everyone, we'll keep everybody posted. And we hope to have an answer this, within March, in terms of what those definitive plans will look like. Probably the best news that we've received as educators in the longest time is the fact that the vaccine rollout took a significant change, or the announcement was made of a significant change to the vaccine rollout today. You may, for, you know, those of you following where it was going, the next group was going to be some of the frontline workers, essential workers, and that included a large group that included teachers. And when I say teachers, I mean all school personnel, people that work with students within the building. But it also included other areas as well, grocery workers and a number of other workers. They really took kind of a sharp left turn and announced today that beginning March 1st, they'll be, well, they're, they're moving away from identifying specific groups and going with age, ages. So that beginning March 1st, people 55 and older will be eligible. Later in March, 45 and older will be eligible. In May, April, 35 and older will be eligible. And then in May, those individuals 16 and older will be eligible. What's really encouraging is the fact that also on March 1st, teachers are the only group that is now singled out as a unique group. And will be able to register all of our staff for vaccinations on March 1st. So what that'll allow our staff to do is, as soon as they're in the, the vaccine system, it's a statewide online system, they'll receive an email and they'll be able to make an appointment. We're also hoping, going to work with our local health districts and possibly provide some vaccine clinics at Ram or within the communities. We held the vaccine clinic last week, very successful, did over 200 vaccines within a four-hour period. But that was, that was limited to those individuals 65 and older. So we're hopeful that after March 1st, we'll be able to do something a little closer to home. So there's certainly encouraging news on that front. Between the positivity rates, between the, the vaccines right around the corner. So right now, we are engaged in the process of looking, what is the next step for us? We've got students coming in three days a week as opposed to the two days that we've been doing all along. And then we are actively engaged in looking at what a full return may look like for Ram. I will add one other note of good news, because I know we're in the winter doldrums and, and spring. We have to hope that spring brings a lot of good things with it. One of the things that was announced is that beginning on March 27th, we, we, it looks like we'll be able to plan for a relatively normal spring athletic season with all spring athletics being, being run, not just with practices, but with competitions at all. So.
I just had a question, Stephanie?
Sure, go ahead Vin.
On the, Scott, on the reopening committee, is that, is that a posted meeting? And, and is that, what's the date on that again? Is that the 24th?
It is, yes. 24th at 1:30, and we're posting the agenda first thing tomorrow. Quite frankly, we held off because we knew that there was an announcement that was going to be made today, and we just wanted to make sure we captured that. In the communication we sent out to families, we also included an email address where they can they can share questions, suggestions as well with the committee.
And do you feel, have they, have they had any comment as to the distancing guidelines? If, if they're going to be looking at those going forward, or is everything staying put for now?
That's a, that's a complicated question, Vin, because, you know, right now, the CDC essentially came out to us with, you know, school openings based upon two criteria, the six-foot guideline and the wearing of masks. Locally, it's, you know, the emphasis has been on distancing as much as possible. So, you know, that, that's a question we're going to have to obviously engage our local health district with and, and, and look at that. You know, we will you know, that will be one of the key areas that we're certainly looking at is, you know, how do we, how do we maintain that? You know, when, when I mentioned that we tried to bring the kids in for the eight-period day and, and found it was, just wasn't possible with the way our schedule's built. You know, one of the, you know, one of the good things is that when we created the schedule we have, we built in a lot of safety nets to try to reduce, you know, crowding. So, but that is something we're certainly going to have to look at. And, you know, part of that is you know, how many, how many students will we, if we went, came back full-time, how many returning? And so there's, there's a lot of pieces to that puzzle.
Thanks, I'm all set.
Madam Chair, have my hand raised? I'm not sure if it still is.
Now, go ahead Judy.
So, it may, I'd, I'd like to ask a question of you. Is there a place on the agenda tonight that we can specifically discuss the challenges and concerns raised by our student representatives? And if, if not, can we add that as an agenda item?
Well, we've, we've gone past the added delete agenda items section.
Stop this before.
Okay, then.
I see this as, as that important, even if we don't make a decision. I mean, I'm sitting here, you know, thinking about what our student rep said, what Superintendent Leslie said, and I think what we all feel. We want to make sure our parents are healthy, our students are healthy, our teachers. And, and I have to say, I am in the same profession. People are struggling right now. And I'm even wondering, you know, if maybe we should schedule a separate special meeting at some point and bring in some expertise. We have Sue Stealthy, I think is the Chair of AHM, or bring in some mental health experts, because as one of our student reps said, or they both kind of made this point. We have never encountered this before. So I'm not convinced we have the perfect plan. And, and I'm struggling myself with knowing that I have college students who you, you know, you, you do have to be prepared with AP, but how do we balance that and mental health? And I feel like I could use some more expert input on this and, and we could as, as a community, so we best meet the needs of, of all of our kids. I, I don't know your thoughts or, or, you know, anybody else. I certainly don't want to speak out of turn, but I've been on the board a long time. And I have to tell you what our two student reps said tonight. I kind of feel, I, I, I feel very, very moved in that we need to do something. I really do.
Okay, well, I could meet with Scott and come up with a special meeting possibly? And maybe bring in?
Can we add that to the agenda? We have done that before to add it. At the end of the agenda tonight, could we have a, can we add a line item to discuss student, staff, community? What, what do we want to call it? Mental balancing, mental health and student achievement, or optimal student achievement and mental health or something?
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
I, I, yeah, I do. I make the motion that we add we add an agenda item to tonight's meeting and how for discussion purposes and possible planning for future meetings of promoting student well-being and wellness, staff, community, parents.
Okay. Is there a second? I was going to second. Thank you, thank you Sue. We could put it in as item 10.5, replace that non-meeting in new, new business. And let's, is there any discussion on that? We'll go to a vote. Joe?
Uh, sure.
Kathleen? Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So we'll add it in at 10, as 10.5 in new business. Thank you Judy. Are there any other questions for Scott?
I have a question Stephanie, this is Lori.
Go ahead Lori. Dana, I'll get to you after Lori, okay? All right. Go ahead.
I just had a question about Scott's summer. Have you thought about summer support for students, or whether it's academic or social, emotional support continuing throughout the summer for, you know?
We, we have Lori. We've, we've both looked at it from, there's additional monies in the budget. The proposed budget for summer programming for high school. And we actually have a meeting tomorrow with the administrative team to look at the ESAR grant money. We have about 125,000 in the that grant fund, which is focused on COVID. And so we're, we're looking at what can we do there for student emotional health and academic support. And we've talked about using some of that And we've talked about using some of that for this for summer as well as for next year. We've also, just to flesh it out a little bit, we had on this past Wednesday, a professional development day and we had four sessions with AHM, which two of them, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, focusing on student mental health. And we actually had two, one in the morning and one in the afternoon, focusing on staff mental health. So we have, you know, we're already working collaboratively with AHM to provide additional counseling services and to put some programs in place for that.
Great, thank you. So will you be reporting on that in the coming months since you're having meetings and things?
Sure, yep.
Thank you.
Hey Dana?
Sorry. All right. So I have two questions. I'm not sure if you'd have an answer to either of them. First, has there been any discussion about whether or not vaccines for teachers are going to be mandated?
Yes, I can tell you that legally, Dana, we can't mandate it. We can only make, make it available. And, you know, we, we control, well, we are able to upload our staff into the vaccine management system online. But we don't have the authority to mandate vaccines for anyone.
All right. And then I think you might have already briefly mentioned this. Do we have any idea what percentage of students would go fully virtual if we were to go back full in person, or has that not been?
You know, I think one of the things that the, the advisory committee is going to, I think, want to do is, is survey our, our families and ask that question. Right now, we have, and I think we're, we're pretty much in the norm, we have about 20%, maybe a little less of our students that are choosing remote learning. You know, it's some other districts that have gone in full remote, have a much larger percentage that are, are choosing to be remote. But at the same time, you know, a lot of that data was based on when the positivity rate was much higher. So, you know, it's, it's relevant for us to ask that question now because the answers might be a little different than they might have been, you know, back in the, in the fall when things were higher. So.
Thank you.
Did I hear someone else with a question?
Hey Steph, this is Jessica. I just had a quick one, too.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just, you know, as we're thinking about a lot of what the students have lost over the past year and some of the traditions. Has there been some thought and planning as to, and I know you can't make a lot of decisions right now, but for prom, for graduation, I know last year ended up being a wonderful event, but has there been some thought as to senior activities and some of the junior things?
Yes, so we're engaging, we're starting to engage in some of those discussions to see what they might look like, you know? And, you know, I think some of that, we're going to have to wait and see what we, you know, what we're allowed to do. So, you know, hopefully here again, hopefully if, if the positivity rebate rate remains low and we're able to, you know, maybe inside gatherings are still going to be limited to extent that would make, say, a prom unrealistic, maybe outside numbers will allow us to do something a little different. We asked this question, we meet every Tuesday, the Department of Health and Department of Ed holds a joint meeting for superintendents, for nurses. Kind of gives us a chance to talk to the experts. And last, well, two weeks ago, we asked the question, what can we expect for graduation? The answer at that time was, we should plan on doing what we did last year. Now, a lot changes over two weeks. And if things continue to improve, you know, we can hope for something, you know, maybe a little more similar to what we're traditionally, students traditionally have been able to do. Obviously, if the numbers go in the opposite direction, then that's going to, you know, have that impact. So, but we are, Penny and I are going to be meeting with some families to start looking at that. Our project, the H M project graduation committee is actively looking at what are some other alternatives that we might be able to do to support our students? You know, it may be a series of smaller grouped activities. It might be an outside activity that looks different than what we've done. So, but, you know, I think a lot in terms of how traditional it looks depends upon what the state is allowing at, at any one time.
Are there any other questions for Scott? Okay, then we're going to move on to the consent agenda, 8.1 approval of minutes. And 8.2 request for unpaid leave of absence, child leering leave from Ashley Ward. We've got Deter's correction.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as in the presentation.
Okay, Sarah second?
Rob will second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll go to vote. Joe?
Yes.
Kathleen? No, she's having a hard time tonight. Kathleen consent, consent agenda vote? Yes, okay. Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yeah, yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, passes unanimously. Right now we have no old business. So we'll go on to number 10, new business. With financials.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So as part of your packet under 10.1, you will see the financial net projections for ending January 31st, 2021. So based on our COVID situation, our current situation and items not running as we're budgeted for, we are projecting 510,742 dollars as a net favorable position. In light of certain other items out of our control and coming in March, Superintendent Leslie and myself will be presenting some items that we would like to move forward to try to help offset some of these items that are outstanding that we were unaware of until we had inspection that had happened this year. And it was a new change to the inspections and the fire doors seemed to be what needs to be worked on. So based on the information that Mr. Leslie provided in terms of the new sports schedule and allowing sports, I'm working with the athletic department, I'm working with facilities and I'm working, reviewing all the accounts to make sure what is projected as, as not going to be expended as was previously budgeted for, so that we can see what really truly is available, so that we can put towards some of these big ticket items to help get them off the plate so that they don't have to keep showing up on taxpayer dollars. If we do everything that is on this list, the net favorable projection would be reduced to about 174,931 dollars. All the other funds are status quo right now. Items are just being paid and processed. Pupil Services is changed, is tracking their changes through the IP process and adjusting purchase orders accordingly. The excess cost submission or actually not the excess cost submission, my, my bad. We're just awaiting now, at the end of this month, we should be receiving our first payment for the excess cost. So we should be receiving a portion so we can see if we're on track and how all our expenditures are tracking to what we projected. Does, does anyone have any questions for the net projected expenditures? Okay, hearing no questions. Student activity is the next one on your agenda. It's been a slow year, as you guys know, so money coming in and going out is minimal at best. And we balance to the bank. So are there any questions in regards to student activity? Hearing no questions. Your food service monthly report is the next one. We are doing our best to capture where we can capture dollars. Again, the invoice is coming out of the operating fund for the month of December. We are bringing in, oh, I'm sorry, that's a typo. It should be for the month of January. We are bringing in the claims, the claims are starting to go up slightly. Also, we're having, as I've stated before, the ladies in the cafeteria that are new for Whitsons are very motivated and are culinary experts. And so they're actually raising, I'm sorry. They're actually raising our, our taste levels here. And so for staff members, we, we have meals that we sell for staff members that start at $4.50 that it's a regular meal, but the specials require a little bit, I guess, elevated food. And so in talking with Kate and Mr. Leslie, our specials are now, now going to be costing us $5.50 for staff. But as today's preview was a portobello mushroom melt that I had and I found very, very tasty. So I'm hoping that staff members partake of these menus, but it seems after speaking to Kate that more and more staff members are actually purchasing their lunches at school. So that helps the fund and any deficit and shortfall that we might be seeing. Are there any questions on food service?
I just have, I just have a comment while we have a lot of people on the line. I think it's important to, to remind people that, that, you know, to use the food service. Because the more, the more people that use the food service, the less we get charged. So we're, we're, we're preparing those meals for the kids, for the students. And anyone can get them. And if they don't, if we don't use them, we get charged for them. So we only get reimbursed from the federal government if the meals are used. So please, if people could spread the word on social media and, you know, if you don't want to, if you don't want to eat the meals, drop them off at a soup kitchen or something like that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Eva. So now we're moving on to 10.2 budget questions for department coordinators.
And I thought Stephanie, it might be helpful for me, first of all, let me welcome our department coordinators and thank you all for all your hard work and your willingness to be here this evening. What, what I'd like to do before we, before we start with the department coordinators, just do a, I have a brief review of some of the adjustments we've made to the budget. I shared this slideshow with the board earlier today. It's just a few slides and then I've got, I can post the slides from each of the departments. But, you know, really, I think the, the question this year was that we were going to use this time to, to ask questions of the department coordinators. But I do have those slides available. So I'm going to share my screen and just go briefly through the Okay, can everyone see my screen? Okay? So in terms of some adjustments since our last meeting, we have, we have a number areas of savings for employee training and development services. We'll be using a virtual training rather than in person. That's going to save us 7,000. We were able to pre-purchase some middle school guidance software, which removes 2,700 from the, from next year's budget. And we are looking at a hire for the part-time school psychologist that will come in at a net savings of about 7,400. We did have a couple of, of minor increases in administrative software and in high school CTE software, which gives us a total adjustment of a reduction of 14,618 from the proposed budget. This, this brings, obviously has a impact on our operating budget and our final budget. The one thing just to point out in the operating budget, we have the audited enrollment numbers, which allow us to accurately detail the percentage that we'll be using for the town levies. Those are included in this, in this version of the operating budget. The capital budget remains the same, using the same percentages for the levies. What this results in is a reduction down to, at this point, 2.21% increase. That includes both operating and capital. Eve and I are continuing to work on some negotiations and I hope that at our next meeting, next Monday, March 1st, we'll have just one more round of, of some savings that will bring that 2.21% down a little bit. I think one of the, the, some of the numbers that I know that we've all been patiently waiting for is the audited surplus numbers from 2019, 20. This is a large number, it looks large, it is large, and a large part of that is due to the fact that COVID occurred last year and, and really shut down a lot of the spending towards the tail end of, of last year. So the, the total amount of the audited surplus is 753,931. 1% of that, which can be used for capital non-recurring, sick and severance for offsetting town levies is 304,959. And then everything above that, the 448,972 dollars will be used to offset as an offset credit to the towns to reduce their levies. And we have the percentages highlighted there. And I think, so I think that is, that is the update from the last time we, we met. I shared with each of you an updated budget book, but again, those are the, the minor changes. I think probably the most, obviously the most important one being the surplus. We will need to schedule a special meeting in March to discuss the surplus in terms of, of what happens with that. So with that, I, I, the department coordinators are here. I have the department presentations. I can put them up. I can, we can go, you know, if you have a question on a particular department, we can show that. You know, I think if you, if you look at the department budgets, looking ahead to next year, they are all, you know, very reasonable. You're not seeing, you're not seeing spikes. You're not seeing any significant increases really in, in any of the budgets. I think the most profound impact on any of the budgets would be English. We have unfilled positions in the middle school and the high school. That reducing those would allow us to address the decreasing enrollment numbers. And I think that under normal years, that, that's fine. I know that Mary Rose, you know, may be happy to field some questions on that. She might have some things to say about that as well without questions. But so I'll open it, I'll open the floor up for any questions from board members or, and/or comments from coordinators regarding their specific budgets.
If there's no questions, I would like to speak just for a moment to the, to the reduction, to the English, the reduction of English positions. I don't know, does the board have the, the PowerPoint that we?
Let me put it up.
Okay, because I just wanted to have them take a look at slide 16, I think is a, the case for retaining staff in the English department.
Give me one second, let me share my screen.
Scott's doing that, you know, for the board. And I understand the need to try to keep the increase under 2%. I live in Hebron, we, we have the largest burden of, the largest percentage of this. And I've been here for over 25 years. So I've lived through many, just, you know, many different budget sessions, and I pay taxes. So I get it. And I, and I don't actually make this suggestion lightly. I think if we weren't in a pandemic this year, facing some of the educational challenges that we are, I would probably just put on my Yankee spirit and say, we're going to make do. But what I want the board to take a look at is between 2015 and 2020, the English department reduced four full positions. So we had six people leave, either through being, going to other positions in the district, with two retirements, and then two people who were rifted. And of those six, we only hired two. And one of the people we hired, we ended up rifting eventually. So we've already reduced four positions, which is far beyond what any other department has done. And now there's another proposal to reduce two positions. You know, I, I'm incredibly concerned. And I'm going to ask the board to really consider if the superintendent can find a way to meet the town's desire for a reduction in the increase and also find a way to replace one of those. So only reduce it by one and not two. I would, I just, I think in terms of thinking about next year, we have a plan for what we know. And right, we know, right now, we know that students are struggling. Our student representatives spoke so eloquently at the beginning of this meeting that the students have not just, you know, academics challenges, but mental health challenges that are impacting some of their academics. We have, we have more students that are struggling this year and, and just not coming. Even some students that are supposed to come are not showing up sometimes. So in planning for next year, the thought of reducing a full position at the high school is really concerning to me, considering that the students all need four English credits to graduate. And we've really prided ourselves on having our students graduate, you know, literate, decent writers, really good communicators. But that's dependent upon the teachers being able to give the kind of feedback that the students need. My concern is, is that with a reduction of both positions, we're going to end up not being able to meet student needs in a, what I think is going to be a very needy year for students as they come back from, you know, some of the trauma that they're going through this year. And a lot of, a lot of the feeling stuff comes out in the English department with students. And so I'm just, my hope is that there's some way that we can retain that high school position at least for one more year. And, and, and just in thinking about by just eliminating that one position through the retirement at the middle school and keep the current staffing and then continuing to support middle school students, which we're doing now with a teacher that we moved that goes into the middle school for several periods and to the high school. That would allow us to continue to support that with the reduction of the middle school teacher. But we have, we have been impacted a great deal with reductions. And so I'm just, I don't think we should be reducing other departments either. And I, I'm okay. I think we can make do with the one reduction, but taking both of those staff members right now when our kids are coming in after a very tough year, very concerned about that.
So Mary Rose, you're saying one more, keep one teacher at the high school for a minimum of one more year, would you think would be sufficient?
I, I would, I would think so.
Just for next year?
Yeah, I mean, my concern is, is that, you know, we're just, we're looking at kids really struggling. And it's all hands on deck, you know, we're trying to find ways to help them, you know, making special packets for them, you know, but there's some kids that are just really struggling so much. And my concern is that if we reduce that teacher next year, we're going to have, we already have, you know, we have teachers that have, you know, 20, 22 kids in the class, and then they're bringing home, you know, three to five page papers to, to grade, to give the feedback. To sustain that in a, in a time when I think the kids are going to be especially needy, I'm concerned about. And I'm not sure what the reduction in numbers are going to look like at the high school after that. I do know that although, like, for example, last year, it said we had 941 or projected 941 kids at the high school, but the English department gets 1,156 requests for, for courses. So, you know, we have, we have a very active environment department. We're not even, we're, I'm not even thinking about that now. I'm thinking, how are we going to help these kids make up for the time if there's bigger classes next year?
Okay, thank you.
And I understand that there's a financial concern. I'm not, that's not lost on me, but I, I'm just hoping there's a way that there can be a way that we can somehow get, not, not take that teacher out of the high school next year.
Any questions for, either for Mary Rose?
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay. My question is that it makes sense to me, I think what you said, to not reduce one of the teachers for next year. Isn't it? And I, I don't think you've said other than this, but isn't it almost impossible to tell the year beyond that if we would need that person or not? Because none of us know how our kids will be.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's impossible. And this is something that I really learned in my, as a department coordinator, and it's frustrating, but the, the reality of a budget is you can only plan for what you know at any given time. So right now, we have to plan for what we know. When I made my budget last year, I thought I was going to use a certain program. It turned out not to work out. And so I gave the money back to the district to buy PPE at the beginning of the year. But I didn't know that, you know, we didn't know there was going to be a pandemic when we made our budget last year. Now we know we're in a pandemic and that our kids need, they're going to need that support academically at the very least, and certainly in the bigger picture. So I, I think, you know, we of course have to take things on a year by year basis.
I guess what I'm trying to ask is, I would agree and support that next year definitely. And then I would almost think we would need to look again next year at this time because I, I mean, none of us know from what I, from what I'm reading about different strains and, you know, none of us know. Is that, is that fair?
Yeah, I mean, I think we plan for what we know now.
All right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a question, Stephanie, for Scott. Regarding the, the budget, I know, I know we, we had some COVID expenses this year that we, we moved around funds to, to pay for. And I know that in, in the facilities budget and some other things, there were, there were additional expenses, especially for the supplies. Any of this money that's, that, that is coming in can be used, is there any money that, that we're getting that can be used to offset that?
There is been. We have, so we have about 125,000 that we, we have to spend. And you know, I think the, the first question we have to ask is, what, what are the emotional, social, emotional and academic needs of our students? That's really where I'd like to start. And, and we're meeting tomorrow. You know, just because, because they've opened up the portal, so we know how we need to go about identifying the needs. The, the answer, the answer is a qualified yes, because, you know, we may find that we, we don't need all of that money to address social, emotional, learning needs, and therefore we can, we can use some of it to reduce the, the COVID expenses. Depending on where we go, it may, it may also be very, very well possible that we use SIR money to cover the cost of a teacher for a year. So that, you know, I may, I may be able at the end of the day tomorrow, see that, well, we can, we can cover the cost of a teacher for a year and do the other things we feel we need to do. So that it, it really doesn't become a impact on the budget. The budget remains where it is, but we're able to, to do so. So the answer is yes, but it's a complicated yes, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of where I was going. And just to follow up on that, I'm hoping that we, that the facilities director is, is shopping around because I know, you know, it's one thing just to say that the prices are high, but you know, as this is, this is going into next year. So as things are coming down, you know, I, I hope that we revisit those, you know, those figures as, as we go on, because I'm hoping that things will, you know, will get a little bit better in that arena as, as every, the hospitalizations are down and, and all that kind of stuff. So hopefully, hopefully we'll start to, to settle out here. Thanks.
And I, and I think then on that, you know, respect, you know, we wouldn't be purchasing all, you know, all of that stuff. We wouldn't front load the purchases, that sort of thing, which will likely fall in price as the year goes on.
Joe, did you have a question?
I, I did. Well, it's not really of a question, but more of an opinion. I, I, first, I'd like to thank Mary Rose for being very honest with us and, and in all the work that she's done over the years. The, the question, I guess the, you know, we have to look at also not just the students, we have to look at what, what our teachers are doing. And I think, you know, I have some experience in this because my wife's a teacher. So I know what she's going through and the stress levels that our, our staff is going through. So I, I just kind of want to bring that back into the equation, into the fold and say, like, you know, if, if we're, you know, these teachers are working and they already know that, and we've already heard from the students that they are having issues. Next year is going to be, I, I, I think what Mary Rose is saying is, is we, we should listen to this and say, okay, because not only are students going to have issues, our teachers are having issues too. They have families, they have children as well. And I, I think that's, that's a, that's a key component to what, how, how, what kind of work are we going to receive from our teachers? Are they going to say, you know, I just can't do this and the kids are going to suffer more. So I, I think we should take a lesson from her and, and, and think about this a little bit more as we move through the budget. That's all.
Stephanie?
Go ahead, Kathleen.
Yeah, I just have a question. Have we, we haven't completed scheduling for the high school yet, right? We don't know if you need two less teachers, so. I would just be a little cautious about that. And I also am listening to what people are saying. I think it's important for teachers to be able to address student needs in the classroom next year. We also know that students are not going to come back at the level that it's been a year. And for a teacher to differentiate and support students at different levels and to give them what they need, especially at the high school level where they're moving on to college. And, you know, I know I've talked to Scott about this before, but I, I, I do worry about next year as much as I'm worried about this year. So I just want to be sure that we're a little cautious with our staff before we, we, we eliminate them. And, you know, I'm not the facilities subcommittee, but I, I do feel strongly that we spend some time on the academics and curriculum for our students, just as much time as we spend on facilities. Not to say we don't need that, but I do, I did join the board as an educator, so it's important for me to really consider the teacher perspective and what they need for scheduling and supporting our students.
I'm, or Madam Chair, are we raising hands or may I?
Go ahead, Judy.
Okay, I, I just can't tell with the screen I'm on. So I would just like to say that I thought about what our English department chair said, and I, I think she said something that, that is very, very true. Especially in their later years of high school and probably all throughout, the English department really is a very safe place for students to explore feelings and ideas. And I think in fact encourages that and really helps prepare the students with their essays for college and a lot of that work. So to, and then that coupled kind of with what Joe said, I think really makes sense. And Kathleen and everybody said, is we really want to make sure our students are healthy and our staff. Because I can tell you, you know, I do this work as well. It's exhausting when you take on other people's challenges and things like that because you care so much. And I know how caring our English teachers are because that's the department we're talking about is why I'm singling them out. And they, they, they do need support in reasonable class sizes and, and things like that. So that's an excellent point. And thank you both for bringing that to our attention.
Anyone else?
This is Jean.
Go ahead, Jean.
I just, I, I want to say I, I'm in agreement that maybe there's rethinking here in terms of what's going to happen next year. You know, from the higher ed perspective, writing is their chief complaint about people coming out of high schools, that they don't do it well. I, I'm not sure that, you know, that's really a RAM issue necessarily, but across the board, it is an issue. I think we really need to keep our English people secure and strong.
Anyone else?
Sure, I'll say something, Stephanie, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Rob.
It's more a comment than anything. You know, I wasn't voted into this position by the Hebron Board of Finance, so I feel no need to be at two. I was voted in by the, you know, taxpayers. So if we have to come in at 2.5 and keep an English teacher, I say we go with that. You know, we haven't failed a referendum in my three years of being on the board. And if we come in at 2.5, if that doesn't pass, then we go back. But I, I don't want to come in too low and cut teachers if, if that's what the students in the school need.
I'm in agreement with that. And I, I really feel that Mary Rose has been very reasonable, asking for just one teacher out of the two. And I understand her position and the needs of the, the department and the students. And I, I would support putting one teacher back in for high school.
Stephanie, I think Lori has her hand raised.
Who, who does? I'm sorry. You, Judy?
Acknowledging, yeah.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see Lori, go ahead.
That's okay. I, I just, I wanted to echo for the record exactly what Rob said. I think that budgets are important. But we're here to educate our students and to build a community of support for our students and our, our faculty. And I think that that's our job and that should be our utmost, you know, what's at the forefront of our minds. I think, you know, I support the one, I would support the two and not having any reduction in, in the teachers unless it's so blatantly obvious that there isn't a need, which I don't think anybody can demonstrate. I think it's hard pressed to really demonstrate it ever, but especially under these circumstances. I will just say, Mary, I had had my hands up before and you kind of answered the question I had before, but just sort of as we know, we have to go to the town's boards of finances and, and things get kicked back. One thing that I, I consistently hear in budget meetings are, tell me exactly how, how the position is being used. Tell me, and I know you can't be precisely exact, but it's not always successful with, we, we think we're going to need supports or, well, to go a few more in class because there would be more more reading assignments or, or less maybe individual supports. I, I've just found people are giving a lot of pushback about specific things that may happen as a result of a reduction in staff. And so I don't know if in the back of your, you know, if you're able to put something together, should the questions come up from the, you know what I mean? To, to show that justification. Yeah, and, yeah. Unfortunately, it keeps coming up over and over and over to overly justify.
Yeah.
And I'm in complete support.
Yeah, no, of course. And if, you know, if there's something specific, if you can give me some specifics about what you like, if you, if you
didn't number the ones, before slide 15, for example, like just looking at how we spent last year's money, you know, I laid that out, connecting it to the department goals. So if, you know, that's just peripherally, if you, Scott, back it up about five or six slides to, you can see the English. And then the next one talks about the goals. And then if you move through, you'll see that, how the, how the, the funding was used. And this is, these are all the titles that we purchased. I mean, I can break down, so I've broken down basically how we spent last year's money, pretty much to the penny. But I can also talk about how, you know, how, you know, how is it that we use, utilize staff? And for example, we were forced into sort of moving people around into a different sort of way this year, which precipitated us cutting our tier two intervention for reading for this year down to, from three to two classes. The impact of that is of course, now I'm looking, I'm thinking next year, oh my gosh, we have kids who are struggling, they're going to need that intervention class. And am I going to be able to offer that? And then if I offer that, how many kids do I have to put into the 10-2 class or the 10-1 class? Or, I mean, when we, when we scheduled our honors class for grade nine, we had to put 25 kids in it. Fortunately, I hate to say it, but three kids couldn't fit it in their schedule. So it went down to 22. That's a big class for honors class, 25. So, and she's taught 25, right? It's not, it's not about the bodies in the classroom. That's great. That's dynamic. It's about, and, and you got to be an English teacher to understand this. It's all the work you bring home on the weekend. It's all the papers you're bringing home at night. And it's been really hard in the pandemic because a lot of now we're grading it online and it takes twice as long. But we really do pride ourselves on giving meaningful feedback to our students. And so, you know, if, there's a balance there. I understand that. You know, there's a financial balance for the towns, but I don't want to see, I got an eighth grader going to ninth grade. I don't want to see our program backslide, especially now when I think the need is going to be so great next year.
Agreed. Everything you just said, all those compromises, I think that's what the, the general, the larger public needs to be able to understand in order to get behind budgets, whether it's English department or, or facilities needs or whatever it might be.
Yeah. So anything I can do to provide the board, I mean, Stephanie or one of you wants to reach out to me and let me know and I'll put something together. I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? The department coordinators? Okay, hearing none. I think we can move on, Scott, to graduation date.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Yep, I can just thank the department coordinators. Thank you all for joining us. And so I think it's setting graduation date. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes. So we have, you have the, the stated authority from the state as a board of ed to set the graduation date. Used to be that you had to wait until April 1st. That law changed last year, so it gives you a, a wide berth of, you could actually set the graduation date at any time during the school year, although most districts will wait until we see what the snow day impact might be on, on the last day of school. So right now, the last day of school is on Friday, June 18th. This would be the perfect time to, to lock in that graduation date so that it doesn't flip over to the Monday, particularly since we really don't know what graduation might look like. It may be a traditional graduation on the softball field Friday night. It might be something similar to what we did, you know, last, last year. It may be an event that we want to take advantage of the weekend for. So setting the graduation date for June 18th, what that will allow, the way the, the law works is as a board, you may set the graduation date as long as that day has at least 180 school days behind it. That is modified this year since the governor allowed us to reduce our days down to 177. RAM reduced our days to 178. So June 8, June 18th would be 178 days into the school year. It meets the state statutes. And again, it would allow our seniors to, and their families to know exactly when graduation is going to occur. Should we have additional snow days this year? Seniors will still graduate on that day and they will not be required to come back to school after graduation to make up extra days beyond their school year. So, so my recommendation would be to, for a motion to set the, the class of 2021 graduation as June 18th, 2021.
Is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
I make a motion to set the graduation date for Friday, June 18th, 2021.
Is there a second?
This is Jessica, I'll second.
I'm sorry, Jess.
Hi, Mary.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go on.
Scott said we can make it any date.
As long as it has 178 days behind it. You could, you could make it after June 18th, should you choose to. I'm not sure how popular you would be with the RAM seniors, but.
Any other discussion?
Why don't you get rid of April break and go a week earlier? Nobody can go anywhere anyway.
I know where you live, Rob.
All right. Well, any other discussion? Okay, we'll go to vote. Joe?
June 18th, yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lori?
Yeah.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so it passes unanimously. June 18th. Okay, we're moving on to review and adoption of the 21-22 academic calendar enclosure 10.4.
Okay, I, I will share my screen so we can take a look at this. So we, we wanted to wait until this meeting to take a look at the calendar for next year for approval, because it does have some unusual features to it, which we think are important. And I'm going to go back to some of the comments that we've been talking about throughout the meeting that I think are important for student mental health and for student academic health. One of the things you'll notice if you look closely at this calendar, it does not have the four early release days at the, in mid-January for the end of the first marking period. And it only has two early release days in June, as opposed to the normal four early release days, which would have allowed us to schedule final exams and the early release days in January that would have allowed us to schedule midterm exams. We, we eliminated midterm and final exams this year for a variety of reasons. We wanted to make sure that we maximized instructional time. We did not want to add that level of stress to our, our students in an already stressful year. Looking ahead to next year, as we've been, been talking, I think next year is going to be a recuperation year for a lot of our students. And we would like to once again maximize instructional time. We'd like to, you know, reduce the additional stress of midterms and finals and hopefully students can focus on, on academic progress. This isn't a final decision that they are total gone. I don't, I don't think you make this type of decision during a pandemic when you're trying to build your schedule around other types of, of priorities. So what we're proposing is that the adopted calendar, which is in line with the local elementary districts, it's in line with the, you know, our region as far as vacation goes and professional development day goes. But it, it does give us one more year to, of eliminating midterms and finals. And then we would revisit that issue next year when we have the, the time and ability to think it through a little more carefully without the distraction of COVID. Other than that, it's a pretty straightforward school calendar.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 21-22 academic calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
Rob will second.
Yeah, I, I have a question. So a lot of colleges are still giving exams. Are students, although not having midterm and final exams, are they receiving some, something in their classes that they feel, yes, both supported, but also that they feel, that they feel prepared?
Judy, that's a great question. You know, they're, they're, they are not getting anything equivalent to what you and I would look at as the traditional two-hour, 200 multiple choice question. Although, you know, we've certainly moved away from that anyway.
Right, right.
You know, a big part of our discussion is that, you know, many of our teachers, instead of offering the traditional midterm and final exams, have already moved on to more application opportunities using the time for.
Okay, that, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so we've, we've, we've already made that shift. And I think we need to, you know, we, we still have PSATs, we still have SATs, we still have the AP exam. So students still have the opportunity to prepare for and take those kind of more hefty, longer, you know, long-term exams where you really need to have focus. So it's not going away entirely.
And so as you said, you're moving or have moved more towards project-based. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I see Dana has her hand raised.
Oh, go ahead. Dana, and I see Lori too. So Dana, go ahead.
I'm not positive if this question is something I should be asking now. I know there have been some students who have brought up changing Columbus Day in our calendar to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'm not sure if this copy of the calendar that we're approving now has any of those names on it, but I do think that is something that we at school should be discussing. I know I briefly brought it up a few weeks ago, but there was, or a few months ago, but there was some other stuff going on. So I just figured I'd throw that out there again, that there are a lot of students who would be fully in support of that.
That's a great question, Dana. And, and, and this calendar, because it's, it's pulling what we had last year, still lists Columbus Day in, it, it does not have Indigenous Peoples' Day for that day, October 11th.
Lori?
I just have a question for curiosity reasons more than anything. How is the April break week determined?
It's determined in a number of ways. When is, when is the state of Connecticut administering the in-school SAT or any other exams? So we look at that. And unfortunately, we don't always know that until, you know, a little later into the school year. So we all look at that. And quite frankly, we look at what are other districts doing? And when we look at the assessment calendar for the state, we then find which weeks we have to avoid. And that tends to give us either the second or third week in, in April. And then we look to make sure that we're similar to the other district, the other surrounding districts. But I think it's the assessment calendar that really drives where April tends to fall.
Hey, Scott, speaking of April, I don't see Good Friday in there.
Good Friday may fall within the April vacation, Rob.
Okay, good. It says on your letter here, it's April 2nd, but that's a Saturday.
Good Friday, I believe, for 2022 is April 15th.
Yeah, it is listed on the calendar.
As the 15th. Yeah. Yeah.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry. That was why I was asking my question, but Mike, I just got shut out of the whole meeting and tapped back in.
So Good, Good Friday, the question was, where's Good Friday? And Good Friday falls within the April break.
Yeah. That's why I was asking, not for religious reasons, but because it's a typical day off. And I'm selfish. I like more days off with my kids at home while I can get them. So that's why I always ask. And every year, it, it, there seems to be no rhyme or reason that I was able to deduce. So, yeah.
Scott, I would just like to commend you and whoever do, came up with the idea about the midterms and finals. That's the forward thinking I think we have to have for our students. Not that it couldn't change, but they don't need that additional stress in the middle of the year for sure. We don't know where everybody will be and how long it will take them to, you know, get used to being back at school and readjust to full, hopefully full-time life as a student at Ram High School again. So I just want to say thank you for thinking about that. And I hope it does benefit the students. I just, just a reminder too about pacing. Just want to be sure that just in case we, you know, end up on our pacing, our curriculum guides, at that point in January, that we still aren't considering big summatives or anything that would kind of mirror the, the stress of a, of a, of a final or a midterm at those points anyways. But thank you for thinking of that.
And, and I would just say that I, I mean, there's, there's right, good stress and bad stress. There's youth stress, which is, which is good stress. I mean, I think the project-based things, while they may be somewhat stressful, there's a lot of assistance and learning and growth. And that seems more conducive to our strategic plan and to everything. So I think the, the project base really makes sense because we, I don't, well, I hope our goal has never been just to stress students out.
I, I, I can assure you, Judy, that's not one of our goals. We, we may do it, we may do it. And I apologize for Dana and Lily for that, but, but you know, that's certainly not one of our goals.
Are there any questions, more questions or comments on the calendar? Okay, hearing none, we're going to go to a vote. So Joe?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lori?
Yeah.
Rob?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Judy?
Goodness, Stephanie, I'm at the very end. Is there any way to do a friendly amendment and change it to Indigenous Peoples' Day? A lot of districts have already done that.
Sure, Sue, we're going to amend the motion to reflect.
Is that okay?
Indigenous and Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day?
Well, that, that would have to be by whoever made the motion and right and seconded it. I'm not sure. It was at the end.
Ben, would you like to amend the motion?
Is that something that goes back to program or is that, is that a subcommittee issue to change the, the wording on the calendar? I don't know. I'm just asking.
Are we allowed to speak up? This is Jean. I, I would think that also should go back to a subcommittee. I don't know which one, but it seems to me it should go to a subcommittee first.
Okay. Why don't we vote on the calendar and bring the, the, the change, the name change to, to a committee?
Sure. Then I vote yes.
Okay. And Jean?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well.
the change, the name change to to a committee?
Sure, then I vote yes.
Okay, and Jean?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. So it passes unanimously?
Stephanie, Joe, I have a question. To go back to the graduation date, we kind of glazed over, but is there a plan for a rain date?
Well, we always build, well, typically, in a typical year, and I know this may not be typical, but you know, we we always have an inside location if if we're going to have rain. So if we're not able to have graduation on the softball field, we hold it in the gymnasium. Being that graduation is on a Friday, that gives us the full weekend to look at rain dates. So it actually puts us in a pretty good spot if we needed to, if it looked like the only you know, source of a of an acceptable graduation was outside and Friday wasn't going to work, then it gives us the weekend to to work with.
Just just something to think about, because that was my point. If you go inside, you're you're not going to meet the requirements.
Yeah, right, right.
Okay, I would like to address a procedural issue that we're experiencing tonight. And I'd like to address the public. We absolutely welcome your questions and comments. And the appropriate time to do that would be in the public comment section in the beginning and the end of the meeting. The the type in comments during a virtual meeting would not be the appropriate time to to make comments, but we would really love to hear from you. So if you would please hold those typed in comments and speak on when we get to the public comment, we would greatly appreciate it. Okay, now we're going to go on to our new 10.5, the discussion of possible future meetings having to do with mental health of students and staff. That was brought up earlier.
Stephanie, may I speak to that?
Sure.
So what I'm thinking and and, you know, I think we all know because Superintendent Leslie, you keep us very well informed. We know out of thought continuously is placed on everybody's well being. I'm just wondering, you know, Ram is often a leader even in the state and we excel at many things. I'm just wondering, you know, I know that Sue Stelfi and others have really championed and done a nice job with sometimes like public conversations or community conversations around things. And I'm wondering if there's anything like that we should be doing. You just did PD around staff and student, but that we could do for parents or even community members. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. That's, that's why I really thought, you know, maybe it could be on this. And maybe if you could speak to some of what we're already doing and maybe what might make sense, would would that be okay?
Yeah, I think Judy, I think that's actually a really nice idea. You know, we we partner with H M each year for community events, whether they be on substance abuse avoidance or, you know, we did. We used to run programs for middle school families during middle school dances. And we did a lot to try to bring parents in for those discussions. This is is, I would agree with you, one of those topics that would really lend itself well to that in terms of bringing families in so that they can join in that discussion. As I, as I said, we you know, one part of our focus is on training our teachers how to recognize students in need and some of the strategies that we can use to address those students. We certainly have our counseling staff doing check ins with students. But, you know, it's, it's a, it's a community thing. I know that, you know, I'm sure we're missing things. I'm sure that families are missing things and you know, it's, I think with with everybody going through their own struggles, it's easy to maybe miss things that normally we would pick up on right away. So you know, I think that with our partnership with H M and Sue is certainly a key component of that as well. I think we could could really bring some, bring that message, bring some training, bring some strategies to our families that would that could be very helpful. And it would be very helpful for us, quite frankly, you know, to have those conversations with families. Because, you know, they may not always think to reach out or they may be busy. And it's hard sometimes to, you know, get a hold of somebody during the school day. So that that may offer some other options for us. I think it's a great idea. I think that's something we could definitely work on and get going very quickly.
Anything else?
What I'll do, Judy's out, I'll, you know, talk with the H M director tomorrow and we can put together a plan. And then in my Friday update, I can inform the board of what that's going to look like. And then obviously, share it with the community.
Does does everybody else think it's a good idea? I do because I guess I learned something from a parent today that surprised me that I didn't know. And even that, we don't know what we don't, we don't know. I think the more opportunities we have to listen, the better. And we have such a resource with H M. Sue, I don't know if you have thoughts because you have a lot of experience with them. And you're in, I think, are you the chair of the board or you're in a leadership position there?
I'm the chair of the coalition. And I think it's a great idea to talk to Tressa and see if we could align with Ram and do something. I know that they're doing their best at putting out a lot, but it would be good if we could, you know, have a night of it and offer it. So Tressa has great ideas. So I'm curious to know what her take would be, Scott, on on this.
Yeah, yep. You know, and I think one of the, one of the challenges that, you know, a group like H M can bring to us, you know, certainly working with our counselors is you know, listening to Dana and Lily, you know, we know that we know that there are students that are really struggling that in normal times don't struggle anything close to what we're experiencing now. And if if you aren't accustomed to really going through such difficult times, it's sometimes hard to know how to reach out. And it's sometimes, it's sometimes easier to mask what you might be feeling. And, you know, so there's, there's a lot of pieces here that, you know, we can always enhance and improve what we're doing to try to support our students and certainly, you know, in partnership with our families, we're, we'll, we'll, we'll just do it that much better. So.
That's a good, that's a good point. Can we hear, you know, from our student reps? What what do you both think or what ideas do you have for us or what what are, you know, what should our goals be or what are our questions or? Dana and Lily, are you both on still?
Sorry, I had to run to my kitchen real quick and I just got the end of that question.
Dana, thank you. No, we're talking about doing something with H M for the community, maybe for parents or, you know, board members, whoever, anybody who wants on how we can be supporting kids and everyone right now. And Mrs. Stelfi is the Chair of the Ram Coalition. And so we, we were talking about Superintendent Leslie and Mrs. Stelfi are going to reach out and work with H M, hopefully to put something together. But we wanted your input on what you think would be valuable or helpful.
Oh, that's rough. I'm not sure what would be the best course of action. I know a lot of things are really hard right now because most of the things that we try to do do end up being virtual. And the last thing students want right now, and I think most people want right now, is to sit in another Zoom or Google Meet, because that's what we spend our entire days doing. But I don't know if there's any other way to necessarily do things. If it's something for the community as a whole, I don't know if I have any necessarily suggestions. But I think, assuming it will need to be over Google Meet or Zoom, I think the biggest thing is going to be finding ways to make it still engaging and to keep everybody actually interested without making it just sitting to another, like, sitting and listening to another conversation because I mean, we've seen our numbers drop. There were 80 people in here when we started and we're at 60. Because most people don't really want to sit here and listen to other people talk for two hours. So I think that's one of the biggest things we need to figure out. But I do think it's a great idea. I think H M has done a lot of really good things with the school community and with the community as a whole. So I think that could be really valuable. It's just a matter of figuring out the best way to go about it.
Those I think those are good points. So I think and, you know, Superintendent Leslie and Mrs. Stelfi and whomever else on H M and folks, maybe kind of what is the outcome? We want the goal and then kind of your point. Maybe some things are more conversational and they don't have as many people, but they may be important too. And then maybe there's a really amazing dynamic presentation that keeps people engaged. So so that that's kind of a good point, I think, is that we can't be all things, but maybe we should do a couple of things.
Any other comments or questions?
Stephanie, Joe, I just want to share my experience with my children. I think everybody's got, you know, their own stories. You know, my kids, one is at college, two are at home. Everybody's dealing with their own dynamic. And I think it's important for everybody to understand that we're, you know, we're, we're all in this together. And we respect everybody. I think the students make a really good point. And, you know, it sounds like they, we're trying to help. H M is there as a need, but you know, you, people have to be wanting to go get the help, number one. You know, I mean, they have to, they have to go in and ask for it. I don't know what we can do as a board other than what Judy suggests. You know, we tried to set up a meeting with H M, but it's a good first, first start. But again, I, there's, everybody's got their own thing going on. You know, my children are are struggling just as much as the seniors are and the Ram juniors are. It's, 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 it's all over the spectrum and some people handle it better than others. But I can also share that at a higher level of education, there's not a lot of support there either. So, you know, we're, we're, we're we're still, I'm, you know, my family is still looking for answers. You know, we, you know, we, we're struggling with a lot of this too, you know, so I, 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 as Mr. Leslie said earlier, you know, these are really kind of uncharted waters for a lot of us. And I think the message needs to be everybody's got to be strong and, and, and do what's best for them. Thank you.
You know, Joe, I think that's a really important point. I listen and talk to a lot of people as a profession and a lot of folks on here do. And sometimes people think they're the only ones feeling that way or experiencing that. And believe it or not, just that simple thing that you said of assuring people that we're all in this together and Superintendent Leslie reported after the students and he really, I thought, acknowledged, you know, my heart felt big when he said we need to care about our teachers too and our parents and our administrators and and everyone. It is a global pandemic. So you know, your point, your point's a great one. It's not that we're going to necessarily have answers, but maybe maybe we come up with even one question or one thing we want to target as a community and then we take that on. I don't know.
Okay, are we ready to move on to the subcommittee reports? Thank you, everybody. I think we have a good jumping off point on the subject. So let's move on to reports. Facility, safety and transportation, Joe?
Thanks, Stephanie. We had a meeting, but I jumped off last you know, unexpectedly except for work, but I know we were talking about some of the facility improvements. And I, I apologize, I'm not prepared. So I'll just say we'll, we'll, we'll wait for the next one. No, 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 no news.
Okay. All right, finance?
This is Kathleen. We met and there's nothing new to report. I think Eva went over everything. And unless there's somebody from the committee would like to add, and as well as program. Also, that the calendar was reviewed and a discussion was had. So if there's anybody from, I don't want to discredit Lori or Jean or Jess or Mary if they have any input, but that's the summary I have.
I think you hit it all, Kathleen.
Okay, negotiations? Anybody want to speak for negotiations? We're not. Anyone?
Go ahead, Judy.
Sure, we have a meeting scheduled coming up. I don't have the date in front of me. Someone help me, Mr. Leslie or Mrs. Goodwin or someone.
I believe it's March 11.
That sounds correct. You know, it's, so we have a meeting coming up. I don't know, we, we had a discussion. Information was shown and gathered, which was, which was helpful. So we're kind of moving along.
And just if I could just add, we're, we're entering negotiations with the non certified bargaining unit.
Okay, and policy?
Next meeting. Yes, we don't have any updates for right now. That was next one's at March 9.
Okay, program. Someone want to speak for program? Judy is not on program. I'm stepping down off of program. So we don't have too many people. I'll be just filling in for anybody not. Sue should be on the facilities, just just so people know. Anyone want to speak for our last program meeting?
I can. If you'd like.
Go ahead, Kathleen.
No, somebody else spoke up. That's fine. Please let them.
It was Lori.
Was it Lori? Go ahead, Lori.
Yep, okay. We primarily discussed the midterm and final exams as Scott had talked about when he presented the calendar. Let's see. I think that was pretty much, that was, that was the bulk of the program meeting. So, yep.
Thank you. And Judy, Eastcon and Cade?
Yeah, no, I don't have anything.
All right, that brings us to public comments. There any public who would like to speak?
Yes, if I can speak again.
Sure thing, Dieter.
Okay, I have a few things. Number one, Scott, thank you for adjusting the budget. And thank you for the surplus that we are getting quite a good chunk on that. Because with the student enrollment, I think Malbo this year wants this jackpot again. And that we have the highest numbers. That means we are right now with the RAM budget, we have about 8% increase. And that is quite a chunk for us because about 48% of our total budget is a RAM budget. Therefore, that makes a quite a chunk for us. In spite of that, on top of that, we have a reevaluation of our property we had since in October. So that means our current list is increased. However, this shows the difference between the property increases. Therefore, the Marlboro taxpayer will be hit double this time, not only by the big increase in RAM, but also with the property tax increase. And therefore, I'm just only saying again, thank you for trying to chop down on the increase. That would be great, thank you. This was number one. Number two, I would like to say thank you to Dana, that she is vocal and speaks up and let us know what the students are thinking. This was quite a nice input with Dana's presentation from Dana. Thank you Dana, if you still answer. But I think this was my main concern is the budget. Thank you for letting me talk.
Are there any other, thank you, Dieter. Any other public comments?
Kelly has her hand raised, Stephanie.
Okay.
I, I do, thank you. This is Kelly Granituck and I just want to thank everybody from on the Board of Administration, everyone at Ram Schools. My son is a sophomore and I grew up in the Ram administration and I see some friendly faces out there. And I know this is all very difficult, so I want to thank you all. I'm a big advocate for returning to school. My son does much better in person, so I appreciate all the efforts and I just encourage you to continue to do everything you can to explore it. You know, students that are struggling, mental health issues, those are all real. There's a lot of that going on, parents, administrators, all of you, the children. So I just thank you very much for all of your efforts.
Thank you, Kelly. Joe, do I see a hand raised for a public comment?
Not for me.
Okay. Dana, do I see a hand raised for a public comment?
Oh, no, sorry, I just forgot to put that back down.
Okay, I see another hand raised for, it says unknown. At this point, if there is someone who is on the phone or on the line who'd like to speak, just go ahead.
Yes, hi, this is Megan Ford.
Go ahead, Megan.
Hi, this probably, you know, wouldn't normally be a question that I would ask, but because this is such a challenging time for all of you, obviously, and students and, and parents on trying to keep track of things, I was just wondering if there is any sort of guide that the teachers are required to use for Power School. I find a lot of discrepancies on how, you know, teachers use it and for a parent to try to stay on top of, you know, their kids and making sure that they're doing what they should be doing, just find it really challenging. Is there, you know, a guide for, you know, for instance, something was due, but they didn't hand it in, so it changes to missing? You know, I, I find a lot of teachers are using it different, in different ways. I'm just wondering if there's a standard guide.
Are you, Stephanie, are you okay with me answering that question?
Um, I, I, we're not supposed to answer questions. Maybe, maybe you could get back to.
Sure.
Megan, would that be okay with you, Megan? If you, if you contacted Mr. Leslie for answer?
Perfect, thank you. I didn't really know who to contact asking that question, so that would be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan.
I saw Deb Hunter with a, a hand raised. Is there a Deb Hunter who had her hand raised?
Yes, the technical difficulty, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Go ahead. Did you want to speak? Deb Hunter, would, did you want to speak or no?
I'm sorry, no, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other public comments?
This is Jody Sandberg. I don't know how to raise my hand in the Google Meet. I hope that's okay.
That's okay, go ahead.
I just want to raise some concerns from working parents on the new schedule changes. I know we've gone through a couple of iterations and although I think they're getting less confusing, I think the last one that came out today still raises a lot of challenges for those of us that are working and trying to pick up our kids who have different schedules on day one and day two and rotating every other day, which makes each week a little bit different, very, very challenging. Just wondering if anyone thought of just keeping the schedule as we have it today, adding in Wednesdays and just having them flop a Wednesday, a day one and then next week a day two?
And you know, I think we, we can put that information out as a general communication to parents. So Jody, we'll, we'll send out a, a kind of some, some notes on that in terms of, of, you know, what options there might be and why kind of we chose, we did.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Just go ahead and speak.
Hi, my name is Jean Glode and I have a, I have a question for the board and for Mr. Leslie. I am still confused to why we are not a full day of school as opposed to a half day of school. I, I will be the first to say that my student is disengaged, my son is disengaged in learning, and it's even worse when his school day is, you know, 45 minutes long. I'm, I'm just, I just need clarification on that. I've asked and I have not received any answer yet.
Okay, thank you.
Will I ever get an answer about that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll include that in a note we'll send out, Jean. So we'll make sure that we get that information out.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Hi, it's Michelle Crawford. I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to make a statement on for the reopening committee. I'd like to ensure or at least ask that they benchmark the surrounding towns that are going to school five full days a week. I would recommend contacting someone from East Hampton and also Hail Ray. They have been five days or are going back five days.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Stephanie, this is Judy. Can you read the piece that we have written about public comments? Because I don't, I don't want people to think we're not being responsive.
Unfortunately, it's not in the minutes, I mean, in the agenda this, this month.
Do you want to just briefly explain it or would you like?
I will explain it. Public comments are welcome. We are not allowed to engage in discussion with public comments or questions during the public comment section. So if you do have a question, please email administration or someone who you think can answer your question, but we are not able to engage in discussion with people during public comment, unfortunately. Are there any other public comments?
I'd like to speak on behalf of, or just a comment about the full days as well. I, I'm.
Who is, who is speaking, please?
I'm sorry, Heather Little.
Thank you.
And my son's at Ram and he's struggling as well. I just don't understand why we're not in all day, not necessarily every day, but why we haven't at least increased our hours. That would increase a lot of instructional time and it would eliminate the contact tracing as far as safety because the kids are already there, they're just staying longer. That's my, that's my only comment. I still do not understand why we are not there for the full day.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay, I'm not hearing anything at this time. So we're going to move on to informational items. We've got the calendar of events and student discipline. Is there any questions for administration about that? No? Okay, moving on to adjournment, followed by a non-meeting. Scott, I don't think we have a separate link for a non-meeting right now. If you want to create one and email it to us?
You got it.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn, it's Kathleen.
Seconding. Jean.
All right. Any discussion? Go to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Motion adjourned, motion to adjourn, 8:33 is adjournment. And Scott is going, has emailed everyone the non-meeting link. So board members, I'll see you there. And have a good evening. Thank you for everyone to, for coming tonight. And we'll see you later.
Great, thank you. Good night, everyone.